Alrighty, let's open the meeting at seven oh two. The first thing I need is a review and approved minutes for March seventeenth. Now, can I vote? I was not at that meeting.
You can.
Okay. Alright, do you have a motion? Any, any comments first?
Looks good.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Yeah, so moved.
Second? Alrighty, and roll call, uh, Philip?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And myself. So there we go. Um, on to financial statements. Shelley, it's your show.
Hello. Uh, sixteen warrants were signed electronically since last meeting. Uh, sorry, my dog starts like.
At least they're having fun.
Yeah, exactly. Um, those warrants totaled eighty-two thousand, five hundred, eighty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. It's a little bit higher than we typically see, but that was, um, multiple months because in March we did not have warrants on the agenda because it was the public hearing for the budget. Um, so we're looking at two meetings ago that I'm reporting on. Um, I sent out the financial reports.
You're gonna get all of our dogs going. One big dog party in a minute.
Oh, my gosh. Um, I sent out the financial reports. There's nothing major to, uh, report on. I'm happy to explain any overages if you do have questions on them. Because there are some overages. They're all knowns and explainable. Um, the budget is on track. At this point, Kristen and I have been in conversation about, um, spending down some accounts that still have funds remaining. We have about a hundred and fifty-five thousand remaining to be spent before June thirtieth. I expect that we are gonna have some funds left, um, due to some things that haven't been fully expended. Uh, we'll go through the typical procedure that we do of transferring, um, from school choice so that we can hold on to those reserves for the future. But Kristen is working on spending down anything that is remaining open currently.
She has learned to spend money. Yes.
You've taught me well, Elaine. Thank you.
Responsibly, but what's needed. Absolutely. Gotta take care of our kids and our facility for sure. And teachers.
And thank you for that.
Yes.
And this is the year budget-wise where Frank- Franklin Tech is gonna make us all look good, so.
Yeah, and it's nice to be able to spend right now because the last two years we've actually said, you know, be reserved, hold off, freeze budget. So it's nice that we can say, okay, Kristen, this hasn't been spent yet. What are your plans moving forward? So we're in a good spot.
Excellent. Alright, anymore about that? That's not where your questions are, Phil?
No, I wish, because I already know the answers to those questions, though.
Alrighty.
Because I have to, I have to talk about them.
Okay. Um, principals report. Kristen sent us a principals report, which I read. Hopefully other people did.
Um, so does anyone have any questions or?
Looks like you're in the countdown.
We're in the countdown, Elaine. You're, you're right. Uh, this is looking good, uh, twelve right now. Um, kindergarten numbers are looking great. Preschool numbers, we have waiting list, uh, looking great. Summer program, we're moving ahead. Thank you for funding that years ago. This has been a huge success. Summer proj- projects, we're continuing with three floors and air conditioning, which is great. Finishing up the MCAS this week, um, I just wanted to mention real quickly that, um, you know, since I've been at Conway, we've seen a couple of town administrators, um, um, we have such a great relation, working relationship right now with the town. Uh, Veronique and I are planning a picnic actually this summer for the school and town together. I'm, I'm just, I'm just thrilled. I'm really overjoyed to be working so closely with the town. We've been working on childcare for the pre-town meeting and childcare for the town meeting.
That's huge.
Sort of like, say that as school committee, the, working with the town is just, it's just been a wonderful addition this year. So Phil, if you can pass that on, that'd be awesome.
That's great.
Yeah, I, I agree. And the, you, you, the, the school stepping up for the childcare for those meetings is, is massive. It makes the school look so good. And, um, it's so, it's so appreciated. I, you know, hopefully, um, hopefully it goes smoothly and.
I've been in some real fun email groups. Um, there's a really fun group planning all of that and the, watching the banter and stuff is fun. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's awesome. Alrighty. Uh, anything else? Okay, on to public comment, and I do believe we have public comments.
Um, are you talking, Elaine, about myself, Lisa Gaylor?
I don't think so. Yes, I thought it was somebody else's name there, that, that, um.
That's the second person, Elaine. Sorry.
Oh, okay. Alright, yes, go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, um, so I'm talking about the fair share amendment. And I believe that Donna sent you, sent all the school committee members some things. So the MTA and our local union thirty-eight educators association endorse the passage of the fair share amendment. Massachusetts voters will have a once-in-a-generation opportunity in twenty-twenty-two to make that public educate, to make sure that public education gets the permanent funding it deserves. By advocating for passage of the fair share amendment, educators and school committees are going to play a vital role in securing that future. The amendment would change the state's constitution to help address the chronic underfunding of our public schools, colleges, and universities. The amendment would add four percentage points to the tax on income above one million dollars, generating up to two billion dollars annually for public education and transportation. This could accomplish goals such as lowering class sizes, strengthening higher education programming, reducing student debt, addressing the impacts of systemic racism on communities of color, and restoring staff to the institutions that serve the common good, which have been hit hard by decades of austerity budgets. So what can you do? As a school committee, you can endorse the amendment by making a re- excuse me, by making a resolution. And you can see the sample resolution that I shared with you. If you want any further information, I'm happy to provide that for you. I know that, um, there's a website now towards the fair share amendment, and I can put that link in the chat. Um, but I would hope that I could see this on your next agenda. Thank you for your time.
So can I, can I just respond, Lisa?
Um, that, uh, you know, that, the, for the four towns, the, the warrants are now closed.
But, um, and I've seen the other three towns as, uh, preliminary, um, warrants. It, the fair share amendment did not make it onto any other town warrant for town meeting except for Conway. I made sure it made.
I didn't hear that, so thank you to know that.
I made sure it made it onto Conway's.
Thank you.
Town meeting warrant, and it's for the town meeting to approve of it and instruct their representative, um, and the select board to approv- approve it, blah, 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 blah. But, um, you know, I, I think it's hugely important and, um, tell, tell everybody to come to Conway Town Meeting and vote for it.
Absolutely. That's, that's another reason why I was hoping school can, yeah, I think the more bodies that, um, the more town bodies that, that approve it, it gets more people interested in it and hopefully it will get passed and it'll become, it'll get on to the constitution and, and help out, help out all these, help out everybody with education and transportation. But, um, so actually, I just came from the Sunderland School Committee meeting and they, they did approve it as a resolution, so. Great. Thank you. I appreciate it. Alright, thank you, Lisa.
So do we need to put that on our agenda next month? Or Phil, you said it's just the town has to vote it?
Well, the school committee can too, but, um, it's not gonna hurt. But the town, the town, the town, it's all the way at the end of the warrant, so we'll see who's still left in the room, but, um, uh, you know, I, I anticipate it would get passed, but who knows? Okay, I, I think it's directly related to school funding as well, that the way, you know, the, the minimum alternative contribution that the towns make is, is, is everybody's zip, uh, income from the zip code divided by the number of residents compared to the other three towns. And we get penalized for the millionaires in our midst. We have to subsidize the millionaires in our midst right now with our school taxes. When, when, when a millionaire moves into a, a small rural town in Massachusetts, everybody else's taxes effectively go up. So.
Interesting.
And that never gets talked about.
So we, so we'll put on our agenda to vote next month so we can have it there, right? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Alrighty, thanks, Lisa. And there's the next two is the other town co- uh, public comment. I thought Donna sent something today that so-and-so couldn't speak, but somebody was speaking for them.
That's Asia. I believe she's talking for, uh.
Oh, okay, there we go.
Hey, if you don't mind, you can move her up in the agenda so she can get here.
Darius, it says Melissa Novak on the.
Okay.
I'll delete that. Okay.
Alright, so we're gonna let Asia go now. Yes? Okay.
Hello, so my name is Asia Saron, and I co-chair the district CPAC. Um, I want to start by giving a huge thank you to all the admin, general ed teachers, special ed teachers, related service providers, and IAs that dedicate themselves to special education students in our district. Um, I'll also say that I'll keep this nice and short because Conway is doing fantastic. So in the state of Massachusetts, each school district has to have a CPAC, and one of the main duties is to evaluate special education programming and provide feedback to school committees. The other role that we serve within this community is supporting and educating families. We hold a variety of meetings, um, the business meetings with admin and school committee members, networking nights for family, staff, and community, a variety of informational workshops, and then our twice-monthly family support groups. A lot of the work we do is behind the scenes. Um, we answer special education questions, help families get connected with each other, give referral info on services and specialists within the community, and share local events. Um, in order to evaluate the district, we reviewed policies, procedures, gathered state data, talked to administrators throughout the year, used family reports and the district's survey data. Conway has twenty-eight IEP students, which is nineteen percent of the school population. Of those IEP students, eight are school choice into Conway, and seven are out-of-district placements coming into the school. And there is no homeschooled IEP students. There's three special education teachers for a nine-to-one student to special ed teacher ratio, which is on par with the district. And Conway has no out-of-district placements in other schools, which obviously saves you guys a lot of money. The BSEA is a state agency that helps with the IEP development process. Um, their numbers kind of help us gauge if families are having issues agreeing on an IEP. Um, the only caveat is that they only provide district-wide statistics, so it's unclear how many were at Conway specifically. Um, but overall, there were fourteen rejected IEPs, seven requests for facilitated IEP meetings, four requests for mediation, and no hearings. Um, I would kind of doubt that many were in Conway because families seem to really like it, as you'll see in a moment. Um, PRS is a state agency that investigates claims that a school is not following IEP laws. Conway had no PRS complaints in the past year. We did a joint survey with the district that went out on Parent Square. Conway had a twenty-five percent response rate, and they were all positive. Um, everyone rated their experience very highly. They loved staff, administrators, service availability, team approach, atmosphere, and communication, and there was nothing that they wanted to see improved. Um, the following are district-wide recommendations. Nearly all of these were made based on issues at other schools, but I think that every school in our district would benefit from these, and it'd be good to have everyone on the same page. So we're recommending professional development on the new restraint prevention and behavioral support procedure and special ed procedure manual. Um, we'd like to see professional development on IEP process, goal writing, documentation, and timeline requirements. We'd also like to see a PD on the stress that families of students with disabilities experience and how to best collaborate with these families during times of stress. Um, and also how to repair strained relationships so that families who provide lower ratings or are feeling upset about the way things are going, um, can feel more comfortable with our district and can just show that we can meet them wherever they're at, even if it's a hard time. The CPAC is recommend- recommending that anti-racism and equity work continue to expand to include students with disabilities. Um, and we'd like to see a training on how to interact with IEP families in a culturally responsive manner, which includes race and ethnicity, but also includes specific subcultures like the deaf community or the neurodiversity community. Um, we recommend increased oversight, um, through random auditing of IEPs to ensure that everything is being provided, timelines and laws are being followed, progress reports are accurate. Um, and this self-monitoring would just allow administrators to pick up on issues before any complaints were made. And again, we don't have any specific recommendations for Conway at this time. Things are going really great. Um, but I'll take any questions if you guys have any.
I really like that report. Thank you.
Yeah, it's very positive. Thank you.
Yeah, you guys are doing great.
Any questions from the committee? Great. Thank you so much for the feedback. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Um, alright, unfinished business. We'll go jump back there. MASC policy update. Is that you, Darius?
Yep, this is the, uh, actually, you're gonna be voting on the, um, section D financial, um, policies. And there's many of them, and I kind of went through them slightly last time. Like, anybody has any questions on them, they are, um, again, recommended by MASC. A lot of language change in, um, just for clarity and such is the majority of them.
Make sure Shelley doesn't run off with all the funds.
There is a line that Shelley cannot run off with all the funds. I think that's.
Good.
One of them.
Okay. Alright, so are we ready to vote? Any discussion? Alright, can I have a motion to pet? Do we have to just do section D fiscal management goals for MASC? Is that good?
You could group them all, the proposed, um, section D, um, updates, and there's a full list of them there.
That's good with me.
I second, I second your motion.
Okay. Roll call. Uh, Phil?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we are good. Alright, COVID update. Actually, that's fun.
Yeah, you guys had an exciting two weeks here. Um, I'm gonna, you, I'm gonna put Kristen on the spot and have her kind of comment because she did, she's just done a wonderful job managing this, this spike that we've had most in the school.
Thanks, Darius. Um, so, you know, we haven't, we've seen real high numbers in Conway, but, um, from, uh, May seventh to today, we've had thirty-five cases of COVID. Um, yeah, which is, you know, we've really been very low. Um, we can attribute that to several things. Um, um, none, n- nothing that looks like a school spread except for one, um, one classroom, which I'll talk about. So, um, the, you know, it seemed to have gotten into, um, some groups of students that do some extracurricular activities outside of school. And so, you know, if you have, for example, just for an example, seven students who ha- are involved in an extracurricular activity together, the student one gets, you know, COVID, and two days later, student two, the student three. So we seem to see that. And then in addition, the siblings start getting COVID. The parents start getting COVID. Um, so we saw two big pools of that kind of situation. Um, no, th- this was clearly related to exactly those situations. And then we saw, um, a little, you know, we called it a spread and we hopped into action very quickly. Um, you know, cer- you know, cons- consulting with Darius for every little step of the way here in the preschool. Um, so we had two students and then, you know, I was at, we was talking to Darius on Sunday and, you know, we decided nursery and, and I sent out an email after talking to Darius, um, strongly encouraging, um, the preschool students to number one test before they come back, came back to school on Monday, and to wear masks. Strongly recommended. Within fifteen minutes of that email, two parents contacted me with two asymptomatic preschoolers saying they tested positive. Um, the rest of the class came back, everyone was masked. Um, we did our regular pool testing on Monday. Um, we, we sort of got preschool right under control right away. Um, and, um, you know, parents were in contact with us about, you know, symptoms and things like that. All of these children seemingly having cold-like symptoms. Um, and then, um, any of the other COVID cases, we traced them really carefully. We're not really doing contact tracing, but for example, a student who might have COVID, had you know anyone who has COVID in, uh, in, in all cases, it's a parent or a grandparent or someone they're directly related to our school. So except for the preschool, any other classroom that we had two or more, we couldn't find a school trace. However, we sent the email, um, after Darius's email and collaboration with Darius's email, noting what the, who those classes were and asking, uh, strongly, strongly recommending that, um, students and staff wear masks in those classes for two or more cases. And we'll continue to, you know, use that practice. Got really positive feedback from parents about, you know, thank you for updating us. Thank you for, you know, the recommendations and, um, some students who have had COVID over the past, you know, thirty days or so, uh, might not mask. But most of the students are masking during this time. I told the parents that we'd be back in touch after this pool testing, which I will. This pool testing, um, came up with one positive case. That was it. So that was today. So I'll be emailing parents about that. And we're hoping that we, um, we stop the spread. But, but the, the most effective was, um, you know, working with Darius and Nurse Sarah and really just hopping on it really quickly and, and taking those steps pretty quickly, notifying parents masking up, doing their tests. We asked all the parents, uh, all of the, all the students who signed up, which is the high majority, get, we have a pool test on Monday, and on Thursday, we send home a rapid test. And I know that some families, having talked to them, test every Thursday, and some wait, you know, there's no symptoms, if there's nothing going on. But we did ask parents last week to use that test on Thursday. So therefore, the children would be tested on Monday, they'd be tested on Thursday. And we also put a note out to, you know, test on Sunday before they came back as well. Parents, parents have been, I mean, they've been just phenomenal, really great with responding to all of those requests, so.
That's great.
We had, we had some pretty big staff shortages last week, but, you know, Conway, they were doing whatever they needed to do to.
Yeah, that's amazing. Thanks for the update, Kristen. Um, and it's spiking everywhere. I mean, I've got, had, our front desk has been, no one left standing. It's crazy. That's five clinics. Yeah. Um.
Our, our Board of Health, our Board of Health says that most of the people testing positive in Conway aren't aware of any symptoms when they test positive. And that, and that we're supposed to be focused not on tests and, you know, positive test numbers. We're supposed to be focused on hospitalizations. And our hospital is still empty. So.
Yeah, so Phil, we did, we have, we have gotten, uh, many who didn't have any symptoms, and those that do have been cold-like symptoms. We've had some that have had some fevers. We really keep a close eye on all of the students and staff who have COVID and try to check their systems. You know, in, in the email, we, you know, I offered support if people need food, if they need whatever they need, just to reach out, let us know. But, um, symptoms have been cold-like, some fevers, um, and, and some s- no symptoms at all.
Yeah, that's what we've had too. Um, Denise is here with us. She just couldn't log in, so she's gonna talk to Dawn about that, but she's the, I assume, the four-one-three ending in one-eight number. Um, alrighty, on to new business. We did CPAC, school choice recommendations. Do we vote those tonight? Or, yeah, okay. I assume Kristen, that's you.
Sorry, Kristen, I assumed it was you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, so what we've been doing the past couple of years is that we've been, uh, recommend- mending, um, one or more per grade, um, which sort of, which sort of, um, lets us look at the number of students in each class and then make, and the needs, the needs, right? So you might have a class of nineteen and a class of thirteen, but you don't want to add any school choice to the thirteen class because of the needs of the class. The nineteen class may be one. So, um, if you, if you do give, if you do approve, um, more than one, um, that gives us some flexibility with that.
Good. Alright, I'll move for, to approve the more than one policy.
That's I can do.
Alrighty, uh, can I have a roll call, Phil?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Denise?
Yes.
Alrighty, it's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for being so thoughtful about it, as always. Um, MASC policy update, foundations and basic commitments, first read. So we have it to review.
You have to review, and just for clarification, I sent out another version of sexual harassment. You guys are gonna get me for harassment on the amount of reversions of sexual harassment I've given you. Um, but our, um, tried, I tried, Phil. Didn't come out well. Basically, written by the attorney, uh, well, the attorney kind of sent out an updated policy, um, and they basically are recommending that the, um, sexual harassment policy be divided for employees and students to have separate policies based on the fact that students are protected under Title IX. It's a different type of investigation when there's harassment towards students. So he said that, e- even though the, the other policy has it written in there, it's a lot cleaner if you have two separate policies, one for adults, one for employees, and one for students. And so that, I'm passing on that recommendation to you, um, and so I gave you an updated one to look at. So this is the first read. If you have heavy questions, let me know in advance because this is written by the attorneys, not by me. Uh, and so I can get those information for you.
And do you want to update us on the next admission procedures and administering meds too?
So we also, um, are looking to update, we have our nurses, some of our nursing policies have to be updated every, every two years. Um, and these are included in, so, you know, basically, the policies have new language around, um, administration of medicines, narcotics included in that in the update, um, additional information about storage, self-administration, um, clarifications around those regulations, and then added sections on documentation, documentation, delegation, and special circumstances. And then the other one is the JFAAR is basically the Massachusetts Department of Public Health Immunization's requirements to get into schools. They're updating it so they're exactly the same, and also making sure that we have protections for those families who, um, you know, maybe under protection of the McKinney-Vento Act, basically homeless families or families who don't have access to make sure that we're doing our best to, um, get those students in school and supporting those families who, um, need to get those immunization shots and not just, not just close the door and say, come back when you're ready, but help them out. We've been doing that for years now. Those are the policies.
Ready. So if everybody would review those next time, that would be great. Um, appointment of regionalization subcommittee rep?
This is what I'm here for.
Oh, I bet.
Phil is gonna volunteer to be on that committee.
No, Phil is gonna trash the committee first and wants, wants to really talk about what, where we're going and how much we're really just sleepwalking already through this. And, um, so, um, so, you know, and, and first of all, you know, just i- in, in light of, what's, what's the town? Was it Covington? The, the, in their regional district, they were the, they're the highest per capita and the be- the best performing elementary school, and the rest of the district voted to close them down? And, um, and, and, you know, and, and why? And what, what's that?
Who is that you're talking about?
Was, that's the town of Covington, I think. They lost their elementary school because the rest of the district voted to close it because of the declining district-wide population. And they were the best performing district with the highest pro- uh, student population in the school per class and the highest per capita income, um, of the district. And the rest of the district, um, a- a- and they lost their ele- out their elementary school because their regional agreement did not protect them well enough. And so we are already in, so al- already it, this, it was frontier. So, so, so for, for those that you don't, we have an operating agreement with the four towns to create the Frontier Regional School. We do not have a written operating agreement for, to create the superintendency Union known as Union Thirty-Eight that we are in. And, and so that's the genesis of this, is the desire to get a, 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 an operating agreement that formalizes the relationship between the four towns. Eh, eh, and, and, you know, but it already started at, with Frontier School Committee saying, we're going to do this. And, and so, so we're already starting from the point where our vote as a weighted vote is sixteen, seventeen percent. So, a- and, but, but the, but the Frontier Operating Agreement that we are a part of gives all four towns minority rights. Okay, it says that any change to the Frontier Operating Agreement has to be voted on by all, voted favorably by all four town meetings, which is huge. Okay, so they can't, they can't close part of Frontier School without all four towns agreeing. But right now, if we just go through with this process as it is, with us being i- in this Frontier, whatever committee is, where Deerfield gets their forty-eight percent and Sunderland gets their twenty-six percent, um, we are already at risk ten, twenty, thirty, forty years from now, when the declining countywide enrollment is going to require us to close a school. We are already at risk to, because of the way this is already baked in. And, and you can't say, well, you can discuss it when the committee is formed because at that point, you're asking someone like a Deerfield to take less than half of the vote that they would otherwise be getting or are already getting. So this has to be like exist, the, the protections for minority towns to keep us from having our school closed against our will has to be part of the process before the process starts. We are not going to be able to convince Deerfield or Sunderland to give up votes. Because otherwise, they know that, um, you know, it's gonna cost them more to close us down. Because the only way that, that if, if all four towns have a town meeting veto, the only way that you get your elementary school closed is if it also makes financial sense to your town, which means that they would have to pay in some regard. So, um, so, so what, what I'm like already not okay with is a committee that has started, as its starting basis, the Frontier Weighted Average. Because it, this committee does not involve this, the expenditure of federal or state funds. The one man, one vote, uh, strip, strip, does not apply to the creation of this committee. So if all four towns have the veto power at town meeting to anything that is ever produced by this committee when it's functioning, then I can rest easy and know that we will not have our school closed in the future, thirty, forty years from now, against the town's wishes. And I don't see any other way out of that dilemma.
So can't you be the rep on the committee and suggest that that's one of the things?
I, I need to kind of jump in clarify, because Phil, I think, I believe you're wrong.
Okay.
Because what I'm asking to create is a superintendency Union Agreement, which currently does not, is not a regionalization. We are not giving up rights of towns as part of a, the superintendency Agreement. Like this is a superintendency Agreement for Unit Thirty-One. Okay, where basically explains the function of the superintendency Agreement and how it functions. And you are correct that by opening that box, how the voting of the, the job of the superintendency Union, which is to hire, evaluate and hire the superintendent and the business manager. Um, it's to, it's, it's, those are the jobs of Unit Thirty-Eight. Okay, that, and then we do collective bargaining together. Okay, it is not a regionalization agreement. It's a, you guys are collectively, you guys are collectively joining together to use central offices, um, myself and central offices as your, as your, your administration, but you have no means of, right now, if Conway hates me and they want to get rid of me, you have no legal course of how to do it. And it will be a, and, 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 or, right now, if I, you know, they decide I'm gonna retire this year, um, you guys want to go hire a new superintendent and you have two people that are, you know, there's a division amongst the towns of who to select. You have no process as to how do you select the next superintendent? You have no, right now, you go behind a closed room and hope everybody can agree. Let's say you have major disagreement. You have no legal recourse. You have no document to run off of. Um, and that's what the super, the super, and I can send you a copy of one that basically um, you know, that, you know, think places like Hampshire Regional just worked on theirs. They have the same kind of idea, they have five, they have four towns, saying to a regional high school and the towns are all separates, five separate school communities. So, that's what I'm looking to do. Nowhere in it is gonna talk about taking the power away from the school committee at all and the governance of their school. He talks about where is the school committee's power? Because right now, I, I'm saying we should talk about it when there's not conflict, but because if conflict was to come up and there's a division amongst the five, the five towns, meaning the fifth town being Frontier, about what they are doing with the people they're overseeing, there's no process on how do you rectify that? There really isn't. I don't, you know, if, if there was grounds for dismissal for me, that was not, I'm using me because it's easy for me to talk by myself and I'm not offended by myself. Um, but you know, if you had, if, unless I did something illegal, you couldn't break my contract and, and move me out. You wouldn't, legally, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have grounds to stand on because you don't have a proper process to do so. And so that's what I want to have a discussion about. There's nothing to do with, I don't want the rumors out there that we're looking to create the ability to close schools. That's a regionalization agreement, that's, that's taking the power away from the school. So however, the, Phil, where you are correct is, what is the weighted vote? What is the vote to put a superintendent, to vote for the superintendent? Right? I don't know what that looks like. Because right now you have Frontier, you know what I mean, that has, that has a vote. Then you have people that are represented on Frontier who are also on this committee. Are, is that two votes? And what about, you know, someone who is on, at the at-large bid and is also on this committee? Is that, is that additional vote? Like those kind of things, right now, if it was a split vote and it came down to the hairs, you guys would all be in court trying to figure out what to, how to, how to settle this in. I, I don't, you know, when um, one of the attorneys was dealing with a similar district like ours that didn't have this, they didn't know where to go. And so, you know, so I think, you know, we need to.
Yeah, so I, I do see the error of my ways when it comes to my reasoning there, I do see that. Um, but the, the.
Did we, did we record that?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
But uh, I am um, just on the alert for the count, the countless ways Deerfield and Sunderland can put it to us if they want to, that's all.
I, I mean, there's also like, and I'm, this, let's go to the other job that the, the superintendency Union does. So it negotiates the contract with the Teachers Association and the I X. Um, what if it went through the whole process and Conway is the only, is the only school that voted it up? The kind, we'll, we'll keep it positive, only voted for the negotiated contract and the other ones voted it down. What's the process there after negotiations are complete? You know what I mean, does it go back as a full group? Or is it each individual town at that point? It'd be good to have language about that, um, clarified in the, in the agreement as well. About how does that work?
Well, I mean, you know, the, but the flip side of that is that right now, if Conway wanted to, it can negotiate its own contract with the teachers. And I'm telling you, we would do a better job like faster and better and fair and for everybody. And, and it should become the new policy of, of Union Thirty-Eight to just have Frontier lead off and uh, to have Conway lead off, negotiate its own contract and let everybody else follow our example. That would, that would solve all of our problems.
Um, you're sounding, we're sounding a little conceited right now, Phil.
No, I'm serious.
But if I am in a district, should I allow you to do that? That's unfair. And, and when you have joined, when you've agreed to be part of a, of a group of other towns to do the business of it, to threaten to pull out at any single time, it's, you know.
I know. How many more cycles in a row can we just go through the other towns just bollocks-ing this up though? Uh, I mean, yeah.
You guys, this is an impossible district, you know what I mean? So this is, this is meeting number five with the same agenda I'm doing.
I know, I know.
Like I, I get it, there's a lot of things that are broken. I'm just trying to, I'm seeing spots that, I mean, realistically, I shouldn't be the one pushing this forward. Because right now, I'm protected by the fact that you guys don't have a system to remove me.
You're right. You're right.
I, I, I've, I've tried to push this forward a little bit, but it didn't get too much, too much headway.
So the idea is, so what I'm looking for is a volunteer to join the group. It'll start in September. We'll start by looking at what a superintendency Agreement has in other districts and what do we want to do? Um, and then map out how much work that is. Is it a couple of meetings or is it a lot more? Then that will come back, the recommendation, something that will write up, written by the attorneys. We'll come back to this, each school committee to be voted on, to then send to town meetings as, as a thing. So that's kind of the process. It could take all of next year and be put on it, or it could take, it could take almost two years depending on, you know, the, is the, is it complex or is it straightforward? You know what I mean, is it a, is it a five-page document or is it twenty-five page document? I don't know, depends the, I guess it depends on the attorney, right?
Right.
The hourly rate.
Alright, who's interested in this besides Phil? Anybody else, or we wanna put Phil up for it?
I think I dig this.
I nominate my answer for the.
I will second that nomination, Michael. Could we have a roll call vote, uh, Michael?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
I will vote yes, Phil, you gonna vote for yourself?
No, I'll abstain.
Phil, in it, I'm happy Phil's on it because I do want someone who's got a loud voice to protect the smaller, we have two smaller communities and two.
I think. We can count.
Somebody's not, while we disagree sometimes on things, it's good to have that loud voice in the room.
That's very true.
I'll try to be quieter.
No, that, forget, that ship sailed. Alright, on to curriculum management solutions, CMS, CMS, small i, equity audit.
So um, you know, I'm looking at bringing in a, to do an equity audit of our schools. Um, an equity audit. If you didn't have time to read the whole document, I suggest you go somewhere near the back where there's a summary proposed. This is the summary of the proposed um, services. But basically um, you know, in consultation with Sarah Mitchell, who works, has worked with this company um, as an auditor. Um, and um, this is a nationwide company that comes into your district and takes a look at all your programs, your, you know, where your students are at, your students' different backgrounds and from where our funding's going to, you know, who's accessing what and basically does an equity audit. And, and, and you can see in the other deliverables of what they're looking at. Um, and then they will give us back a report. And this is kind of an extension, it is not the, an anti-racism equity audit. It is an equity audit that includes racism, you know, looks at racism and other marginalized groups. Um, but it is looking at all of our students and it will do an extension of our, um, you know, is an extension of our anti-racism and equity work. Um, but it's also looking at the full programming of all of our schools. Um, and so I'm moving forward and doing this. And what I want is to get the school committee's approval as well, so that I can bring this, so that you have the buy-ins. And when I come back with the report, you've kind of commissioned the report as well, so that I'm accountable to the outcome of this report. Um, right now, this would probably take place in March of next year, based on their scheduling already. And we would get the report six weeks afterwards. Um, it's a heavy price tag for an audit. Um, basically, it's thirty-five thousand dollars, divided over the five schools, so that kind of, you know, it's not, not a whole lot when you really break it down that way. But we're looking to paying for it using a grant and also using some of the S R three money that we had used, that we had put aside for professional development. Because this is gonna help drive professional development as well. So um, it's also going to bring, you know, to light, you know, some of the work of our, our anti-racism equity group to really look at some of the numbers. And they really look at data, you know, they're gonna come in. We have to provide them a ton of stuff in the fall, where they're gonna review it. And then they're gonna come out in person and do that as well. So um, these are professionals, unlike for those who've been part of like me ask, um, where they get volunteers to come through and they get led by professionals that kind of. These are not volunteers, they are, people get paid for their service. Um, and they have a very good reputation, so um.
I think that sounds like a pretty good price actually for all that. So do you want to vote from us tonight on this?
Yeah, I want to vote to support. Um, so basically you're supporting the equity audit and that means, that just kind of, it binds you that I'm, when I bring this back to you, you, you're gonna.
Alrighty, can I have a motion to support the equity audit?
I'll make a motion to support the equity audit.
Phil's second, alright, roll call, Michael?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so there you go. And foundation statement, anti-racism and equity.
So I'm treating this like.
Add to the equity audit.
It, well, in a way, um, this is actually coming out of, so you know, last month, we did get a, uh, the overview of the anti-racism and equity group and Romney Associates talked about the, you know, where, you know, these, what we've done this year. Um, this has come out of the policy committee of that group. Um, you know, which I am on and when we were looking at policy, we didn't have any kind of umbrella statement about what is anti-racism and equity mean? And because there are different definitions of it and people have different approaches for it and sometimes you hear that even within our community, so we created this foundation statement. And uh, just hard work from that committee to create it and then it was approved by the full committee. And now I'm sending it off to school committee for you guys to read it, so this is the reading of it. And then at the next meeting, um, we can discuss it and you can vote to add it as part of um, um, part of our policy book and also put on our website and such that this is what we believe. Um, it, just to break it down, overview, it gives the purpose of it, the definitions of equity, um, anti-racism and educational equity, and then the beliefs around that. And then what I think is what probably the most important page is that the last page just talks about our intentions, which is basically the action steps of this work. And where does the school committee fall within that? So um, you know, please take a read through it. Um, if you have questions, I'll, you know, certainly try to answer them. If you, as you're reading them, you have even heavier questions, let me know in advance and I can even reach out to the committee and stuff to get the feedback on that, so. Um.
Great, first step, it's good. A continued step.
I thought it was really, I thought it was really good.
Yeah.
I thought it was really good.
Those things are not easy to.
No, no, and you could tell the cr, the care that went into it, it was not a copy and paste job.
It was draft upon draft, because it was, it was written in committee.
Yeah. You could tell.
And then there was some, it wasn't, you know, I'm on that committee, but there was a subcommittee of writers that put, that put in a ton of work into that. And so my thanks to them.
That's awesome. Alrighty, superintendence evaluation.
Just a reminder that you need to get that done this week.
What's the deadline?
Saturday, uh, Friday. And then the chairs are going to get together and, or, I don't know how you guys are gonna do it, but I'm being told you're gonna get together, someone's gonna write a summary of that with the information. You're probably gonna have the summary written, then you'll get together to agree on it and then we'll discuss it. This time we're gonna try it differently, we're gonna do it separately at the June meeting instead of doing a joint meeting where people can't, people felt like they were um, too many people at the table, kind of, so, whatever, phrase this way.
If you haven't done it, make sure you do, please, it's important. Um, I think we've already done, uh, Denise, is there a collaborative report at all?
There isn't because the meeting's next week.
Okay, there we go.
That's what the last meeting said.
Alright. But I think we're good with our reports, no need for executive session. Anything else? Do we want to think about meeting in person in June?
Yeah.
Be kind of nice to be together for the end of the year, as long as numbers come back down. They're, they're kind of saying they should come back down next couple of weeks.
Hopefully we'll all be together Saturday, June fourth at one P M for the Conway Annual Town Meeting.
Yes, of course we will.
But.
Outside.
It's not outside, it's.
It should be.
It's, good luck trying to rent a tent now.
Yeah. Alright, so let's lean towards in-person next month um, to close out the year, but we'll see, we'll keep an eye on things. Alright, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded.
Alright, Phil?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Denise? I'll take that as yes, and uh, I vote yes, thanks to everybody for all your hard work.